To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto communications, recognitions, and information. A little information from Dr. Isaacson on our Board of Education calendar.
All right. The calendar there is just our full year calendar. And I'll update that there and check the dates off. The next scheduled previously meeting that we had was on July 13th, our summer board workshop. We may, at the end of our agenda, add a special meeting proposing next Wednesday, but we'll address that in new business. But our calendar there has been updated for next school year. And everyone, Ms. O'Acquah made a nice magnet there. Everybody's magnetized. So. And then what?
For the sake of the people who are present, you know, can they know where to look for the calendar?
Absolutely. Our board meeting calendar is found on our website. If I'm going to navigate there so I can be very specific. Is if you go to boarddocs, which is our Board of Education portal, public portal. On the, if you go to our hsdr3.org and go to the bottom in the quick links, the very top item there is called Board Docs. If you click on that, it'll open up the Board of Education page. And right there on the front page, we have our Board of Education meeting dates, our strategic plan. It also has all the board agendas and our board policy and meeting schedules and past meetings as well. But on our district website, under Board Docs is where you can find all the Board of Education meetings.
Appreciate that. Okay, on to some discussions, some reflections. Several of our board members attended the MSBA's Summer Summit. And I wanted to give those that were in attendance an opportunity just to share their experience. Anyone who was in attendance would like to go?
I'll go first since I'm present. Angie's on screen. I always attend a legal session. And there were many education bills filed, but I think we were very fortunate that only a few actually got through because some of them were very damaging, especially to public education. And some of those will, of course, resurface. One of the pluses, especially in the hiring issue going on, that they have removed a lot of the restrictions for retired teachers, that they can come back and work longer without the month separation and all that kind of thing. So that's definitely a plus. I also attended community engagement. And, you know, the major theme was get your information out, be open, transparent, and share in documents, town hall meetings on a regular basis. And if you, heaven forbid, if you have a major safety issue, be sure and use proper terminology because within 90 seconds, they will know, public will know. So you need to be fast with your info and be accurate. Accommodations are very nice. This time I had an awesome room with a view. Seniority counted.
Mrs. Oshie, do you have anything to share this evening?
Yeah, I attended a session on board governance and how to set goals for our board and then measure against those goals. It actually aligns very well with our GINSSIX goals and standards that we're addressing there. So I have some documents out forward on John Lynn Horse and John Isaacson just for consideration as we structure our board goals moving forward. It's a great way for us to structure those goals and then, of course, measure those goals on a regular basis to see how we're performing as a governance.
All right. Well, I took in a board president's workshop with Mrs. Oshie that focused quite a bit on parliamentary procedure and ensuring that everyone present has an equal and equitable access to discussion. Learned a little bit about the, like I said, parliamentary procedure in that process. Also took in a session with regard to a new superintendent evaluation toolkit that the organization is working on. And so they are working on piloting that going into next academic year. That may be something we want to explore as they launch that in full force in the coming years. I always enjoy getting the refresher and more information about school district finance. Took in a session on that. I come from higher ed finance, so the two are not distinctly different, but just different enough that I always appreciate the refresher course in that regard. So that was our experience.
Short.
A great opportunity. All right, on to reports from superintendent and staff. We also have Dr. Isaacson, superintendent.
All right. Kind of a quick report this month. Summer projects are going well. Summer cleaning going well. The transportation maintenance facility was done at the bus garage. Ray and his team are, have been working on renovating some of that, like some new flooring down and doing some demo and rebuilding there, but that is going well. Pavement and roofs are expected in July, from when I gathered, when I visited with Ray earlier this week. So we're on schedule for all those. He's still nodding his head there. So just an update there. Kind of piggybacking off what Ms. Vitrue talked about on the legislative side. When I attended the Education Plus Board Meeting, they presented kind of their summary. One of the ones, they mentioned the PSRS ones, but one that I think will have an impact potentially on the district is a property tax credit for seniors, which creates a process by which a county may offer a property tax credit to seniors. The county commission, council would vote, or a public vote on the community via an initiative petition, which would create a property tax credit, could be applied to a single residence of a taxpayer and would be of an amount to effectively freeze the property tax liability for homeowner to the tax liability owed when the taxpayer became eligible for social security. So whatever the tax bill was, when, say they're 75, or it would go back to when they were eligible for social security so they do not be subject to any tax increases, et cetera. But that would be voted on. It's not just the state doing it. They could put that back to local controls. That'd be the county putting that on, either making that decision or it being on the ballot. And that was, I mean, there's some ones that apply to us from a school standpoint. But that being a large one for the community that may have future impact on school districts when you're doing bond issues or tax levies is factors in our seniors and those on fixed incomes which may be beneficial to the school district and also helps them out. So. Also, kind of a piggyback, at that EdPlus Board of Director meeting, I think purely by chance and I was the only person superintendent standing, meaning that Dr. Carl is getting off the board after next year. And Dr. Sharona Keharn from New City is the current chairperson-elect and will be our chairperson of our, the EdPlus Board for this upcoming year is they went through the list and Dr. Ziegler is on. Dr. Isaacson will be the chairperson. The 24, 25 school year. So that's not going to be any more time consuming, should not be any more time consuming than my current schedule of going to the meetings, which they alternate between virtual and in-person on Thursdays like once a month. It's our Board of Education meeting for EdPlus and go through all that. So. We've just hired a new chief executive officer for EdPlus, so that took a little bit more of the current chairperson's time, but that one shouldn't impact me. Want to recognize the Discovery Trail Project. Shelby Walsh, who was an art teacher here, and Ryan Hurchin, a community member instrumental in this project at the city park. From a, there was a ton of people, I think Mayor Russell back there and who was assisted with that. But from a school standpoint, we had students, engineering students, our JAG students, Mr. Nansel, Mr. Grace, all participated in that project. A ribbon cutting was held on June 16th and went down for that ribbon cutting. It's really kind of, if you haven't been down to the city park and walked down to that, it's kind of, I mean, it's a unique, it is kind of cool. And just the math that went into all that. I guess yesterday or at the solstice, they got it set up where the sun would go through that glass prism and shine on there. So it's pretty technical, but they got different areas set up and you can walk through and scan on your phone, you know, bring up different items about the area. And so they did a really good job. So congratulations to the city. It's a nice addition and we had some staff members who took an active part in it. So congratulations to them. That's all I have.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Any public comments this evening? All right. None. We will move on to items of board policy. Several tonight, changes to policies, GCBA, GDBDA, GCBC, and CHCA. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Give her a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss a few. All right. These policies and why they're being presented tonight is these G policies typically, once they go, of course, because they deal with personnel, you want to not have a mid-school year kind of adjustment. So the first one, kind of running through, under GCBA, which is professional staff compensation. Our current text reads, "The district may recognize up to 10 years of employees' previous experience when placing them on the salary schedule." Teachers having taught at least one semester but fewer than two, so somebody hired at Christmas, we'll say, will be credited with the full years. So we're proposing changing the language to when placing an employee on the salary schedule, "The district may recognize and include all applicable and verified years of teaching experience. If the employee has more than 10 years of previous experience, the superintendent or designee approval is required before offering them a position." For the more teachers who have taught at least one semester but fewer than two will be credited with one year of experience for all salary schedule placement. This policy applies to all certified positions as applicable code. So this also is, it's not necessarily, I guess I didn't write it in there, anyone hired before, but this needs to be
Retroactive.
Retroactive. So that is the intent as well, is because we do have some employees that were hired that had more, kind of going through, have a teacher. Matt Thompson had 11 years, Tracy Johnson 11 years, Tom Ludwig 16, Jess Arnold 15, Tim Arnold 15, Lindsay Sodak 13 and a half, Brandy Heron 11, Tracy Moses 11, Chris Gronberg 12, and Ms. Bowen had 18. So when you hear me say 11, that'd be they'd get one additional year and retroactively go back and do that. So as I count them up, it's 42 and a half years. So there'd be an initial cost to make this, to make it fair for all, as well as Mr. Detwiler, who's going to be our new elementary principal, had 22 years. So we only brought him in to get full credit for that amount of applicable building principal years, et cetera. Why I'm bringing this forward is the job market is getting tougher for higher teachers. Some other districts within the St. Louis area have done this, some have even so far as offering additional years towards tenure. I don't recommend that. I do think that in the state of Missouri, just within our profession, is we need to recognize all those years that people have worked, even if they're going to a different district, is, and we put the thing in place to where if somebody has more than 10 years, the principals or that hiring committee will be Melissa, myself, is to review is, all right, that person is 20 years, that's, you know, $8,500 more, why are they? Sell me out. Okay, then we go. And in some cases, it may be an applicant of one, you know, and we're finding that a lot more. For sure this year, it's kind of the first that it's hit us. We're going through that right now. Not huge, but it's, this is an investment of doing everything that we can to open the candidate pool because I think that's kind of a barrier. We're losing educators in the state of Missouri. I think in part due to this is if you taught 15 years somewhere and you move across the state, you apply to a job and let's say you come here and Hillsborough's like, I'll bring you in, but you're making, I'm only going to give you credit for 10 years and you're making 10 grand less than you did last year. You're like, I'm going to do something else. Is, as a profession, we need to keep that pull up. So that's the first recommendation. The second on that same policy is updating the contracted days for full-time registered nurses. And we previously read, for full-time registered nurses shall be set at 183. It's just updating that to align with the school calendar and include all days set forth by the district head nurse for the purpose of testing health clinics, enrollments, and trainings, just aligning it to the school calendar from the hard number. Under GDBDA, staff leaves, support staff leaves. Previous year's vacation, days not used by December will be lost. And coming through COVID, it hasn't been an issue, but sometimes it is for, something occurs where people can't take off. In fact, a couple of the people sitting in this room, it occurred to during COVID, when you're trying to get all the technology out, or somewhere and you're building all these things, you're not able to take vacation. We want them to utilize it, but for the classic, support staff policy had this in there that if they didn't use vacation, they lost it. Like, is, we'll try to work with them, is they, well, we work with them. They have, their leave is just designated as leave, not simply for personal. So after December 31st of the previous years, we just, this here says, we're just going to move it into your leave bank. So you won't be subject to, you can't take eight weeks of vacation. I still have to approve it, but I don't want anyone to lose the vacation. And it's going to their, into their leave anyhow. So it's just transferred into a different bucket, which are kind of, have some different rules attached to it as far as usage. Professional staff fringe benefits and as I was going through this, it was kind of unique that the actual policy that I wanted to change had to deal with bus drivers and it was in the professional staff, which is typically within our certified. And it wasn't in the support staff policy. So I've updated in both. To previously, it said bus drivers who work an average of 20 hours or more per week will be provided access to the health insurance plan is changing that to 30, so aligns with ACA as well. And it also gives us some flexibility. Some drivers don't want to work. They're not, they may only want to work 20 hours, but we're giving them the same healthcare benefits that somebody's worked in 40 hours a week, 12 months a year. And that, you know, that's a $6,000 benefit. So it gives us, individuals may not want the benefits. They choose to only do the 20 hours, which will free up some money to then pushing the salaries. Some of our bus drivers, retirees, don't even need the insurance. It just gives us some flexibility in making sure that our goal is to have people covered if they need it and they're working towards that. So it's just increasing it to match ACA. Handbooks is before you tonight is the student handbooks is put this in here to update going forward for next school year and basically removing, the building administration is to have student handbooks submitted to the Board of Education for our first reading annually at the March Board of Education meeting for the ensuing year. Proposing and recommending removing that for a couple of reasons. I think it's recommended by MSBA, but also from a practical standpoint, is the board already has its policies. The administration, if you look at the policy, I'm charged with making sure all align with policy. The building principals are charged with, the policy needs to align, or their handbooks need to align with policy. Ultimately, if, let's say, something isn't aligned and they're conflicting with, even tonight, the board approves the handbooks, you have two board-approved conflicting policies. And which one trumps the other? It's just, the board has approved their policy. The handbooks, which are disseminated, should reflect that policy, not approving a summarized rewritten version of that. Is, that needs to be simplified, but it creates essentially two policies potentially. So just to, we're, the board's still going to receive them. They're going to be made of all published handbooks will be made available to the board. It's just that we're not calling, going for, calling for a vote.
So the question there is, you know, if the board conflicts with itself, then it's obviously the one in some trouble. Whereas if the handbook does turn out to conflict with the policy, who, who needs talking to here? The administrate, the superintendent?
If it's a student handbook, well, it's going to come through. The board talks to me, so yeah, I'd be getting talking to and then subsequently.
Well, I'm just saying, where is the responsibility?
The responsibility.
It lays on you.
Instead of us saying, well, you guys approved. And it takes the onus off the board of like, hey, make sure you don't vote on. It's just, our charge is to align them. It's just we're not bringing them to be voted on.
But we're still going to approve them tonight.
As I was saying that, I'm like, we're approving the policy.
I was going to say.
But right now it is in policy.
Yeah.
Is.
However, don't we have to have two reads on the policy if they even changes?
I don't know that it's, is it required?
I think so. I mean, that's my.
Like to change that policy? I'm joking.
This is a first, this is a first read.
This will be a first read, so we aren't going to take action.
So.
We will.
And this G policy would be in place before the teachers and such get back, but.
So we can remove those motions from the board.
Yes. Just a question for on item six, the bringing in the years. Are any other neighboring districts doing that yet?
Northwest.
Northwest is.
Festus.
Festus is also.
You can take all of your years and has been for several years. Yeah.
We just hope it'll give us a leg up.
Yeah, no.
Here's what it will do. I hope it does from the standpoint of, I think it for sure on the recruiting from the south. And the district eight miles south, Grandview, you know, Grandview kind of, unfortunately, I talk with Mr. Zoff, he's, I feel like I'm Memphis. Everybody's, I get them coached up.
In chains.
And Josh takes them and we take them and, but also from some of those southern. But at least gives the ability to, even, a variety of reasons that teachers may move districts. We have a lot to offer here. Is at least, if our salary schedule may not be the same in events, but it can at least put them in the vault. It's not a $15,000 difference. It's going to go to year 10. Is, it gives us every option that we have.
Please read this. So before we close on this, I'd like to ask for an amended motion to move this to first, first reading instead of approval.
I'll move to amend it so that it's a first read.
Okay, thanks. I will need a second. All those in favor of amending? Not opposed? That carries? Then we are on to items of consents. Do I have a motion to approve all of the items on tonight's consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Any items in need of detail or to be pulled from tonight's consent agenda, 10.a. through 10.k.? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda? Not opposed? Motion carries. All right, no unfinished business this evening. We'll move on to new business, the approval of the 2324 preliminary budget. Do I have a motion to approve the preliminary 2023, 2024 budget document as presented?
Summit.
Second. Any discussion or Mrs. Ginch, any additional information you'd like to share?
So you got your hard copies of the books tonight. The detail was in the last board packet as well. The assumptions I made are the ones that we've been talking about this spring as far as revenue goes. The 2% increase in assessed valuation. We're using the 60 through 75 state adequacy target. The pandemic provision does apply towards our formula calculation. Still for next year, it doesn't apply to things like our classroom trust fund and our proxy payment. So those will see a little bit of a dip unless the dollar amount went up. I've included the remainder of revenue on our ESAR funds and the expenditures that correspond. The big highlights on the expenditures, obviously salaries. I made the assumptions for what we had discussed and what we planned on approving tonight. The health insurance increase, dental insurance increase. Math textbook adoption is what we'll be doing next year, so that's a big dollar amount. We have Chromebooks in there for the rotation that we have in technology. Bus purchases that we've already approved. Summer projects, big repairs such as HVAC, some intercom work at the elementary, equipment for food service, and then the instructional budgets were decided on the building level. So. So like a lot of stuff in there. Those are the very broad highlights.
So you had a wonderful projection of finances budget-wise sort of for, you put it out, what was it, five years, I believe?
Five years. I did that with negotiations. It was very.
Is that going to be shareable to the public as kind of an idea where we're headed?
I can do that. I'd like to do that once we finalize this end of the year.
Because I mean, you know, there's, and there are things that obviously haven't gotten through, but any sale of property we might do or anything that might impact the budget is not in here, right?
Correct. Actually, the sale of property, the proceeds of that.
Oh, it isn't? Okay. All right. I didn't see it under revenue.
At the very bottom.
At the very bottom. Oh, there it is. I see it now. I also had a question on the, you know, and maybe it's, I never noticed this before, but why is it the elementary and primary, for instance, and I'm seeing possibly in the other one, some of the others, the instructional general, yeah. Instructional and general equipment budgets are zero. Is there a reason they don't anticipate any?
It would have to be an expenditure over $1,000. So a lot of times they might not have that planned for their building.
I guess. It just, it would seem very handy. I guess, it just, it would seem very handy to have that sort of flexibility there, I just, okay.
And sometimes they'll, something will come up and they'll want to move some money.
But that's often not an issue, huh? They don't really, they don't really have an issue on zero dollars.
High school a lot of times might have something capital, but.
Yeah, okay.
Particularly not the lower levels. Not on a yearly basis anyway.
Other discussion, points of clarification or questions?
I mean, as I, I just want to also clarify, we understand the ESER funds are running out after this year.
Next year, that'll be it.
And it doesn't say, or does it say in the summary how much that is?
I didn't put a dollar amount because I was still working on my pull down.
But an idea roughly what we're talking here in terms of.
For next year?
Yeah, with the ESER.
Around six hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's, okay, so that's a major deal.
Okay. Sorry. Uh, any other questions on the budget? Okay, all those in favor of approving the preliminary budget? None opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the approval of the purchase of external bus camera systems and a protection plan from Safe Assist Innovations. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of ten external three hundred sixty degree bus camera systems and protection plan from Safe Assist Innovations in the amount of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars as presented? Any discussion?
Really honestly, the only question I always have was something like this when we're, it's not. I mean, I just understand, is this adding these cameras or have they been here and they're just being replaced? Or is this installing new ones?
No, this is, these are the cameras that are on the outside of the bus, the three sixty. So last year we added five of them, it was kind of a prototype.
Prototype, yeah. So this will be adding those on the others?
This will be adding ten more. So we'd have a fleet of fifteen with them on there.
So I guess the, I guess there really are two, but one is, it's always fun to approve something new and shiny, but what are the maintenance? What's the maintenance bill on these things? Cause that's often neglected, you know? What's the structural hit basically to the budget for having these things?
The.
Is there an idea? I mean, I know it's only been around one year, so you really can't say from experience, but is there?
So in, um, I, offhand, I don't want to quote on the life expectancy, I think I want to say, come ahead, I'm saying.
Probably similar to any technology.
Yeah, and I, whatever.
Well, I mean, you know, you take like a laptop, you'd think that'd last longer, but you know, they, because of the support, if nothing else, it's only four or five years, it's a pretty short.
And we're going to try and put them on our newest buses, like we're getting a few new buses, so.
And so, and with this, the fifty-four thousand, cause when they, our goal was to do five. And which was right at a twenty-five thousand dollar range is when the bond issue did pass, cause then we would have done them all from a safety standpoint. Is we're just taking, going through the buses in small sections. They are doing ten, that's key on this one here. Yes, we are committing as a district to pay fifty-four thousand. But I do think it's important to note that thirty thousand is in this year's budget. And they, no interest being withheld during that debt, and then next July, twenty-four thousand, or the balance will be paid the following year.
Like a two installment pay.
So they're willing to put all ten in now, so we, and then we'll pay them over. Cause I was like, we budgeted, kind of planned out thirty grand, we can't go over that and they're like, can we just install them?
So on the support issue though, so not only, I guess, cost now occurs to me also to say, are they providing the support when things break down? I mean, you know, do they have?
There's a protection plan. Yeah, this includes a protection plan.
I mean, is it for how long now?
Five?
Two years?
Two years.
Yeah, okay, so it's like under warranty for two years, but you know, in ten years or whatever the expected life of these things are. I hate it, like it happened with voting machines, there were all the dis, you know, all the districts or political districts thought it was a great idea. They bought these voting machines and then the companies disappeared overnight when the federal funds disappeared. And suddenly there was no support for them, so now these things are like twenty years old, way past their service life, you know?
And my, my assumption there would be that that would be part of the deferred maintenance on the transportation fleet at that point too.
John, have you heard any, and I don't know that we would have, but you know, from what I've been coughing this, this is not really offered yet. But this type of system is becoming common in passenger vehicles. Have you heard any rumblings of this becoming an option or a stand, even standard option on new buses as they're being built?
I haven't heard that.
That's not something, that's not something we're going to.
But I would, I could foresee that. I could foresee them at MSBA in the future as far as, or being bought out by a bus company. With their technology and their whole manuals and doing that, cause they started here, like using our buses to do the prototypes. Is, I think in time, it's like one of those things, it's unfortunately takes tragedy for all of a sudden that occurs. One of the reasons is why I still feel like it's important is we had a bus accident this year on Buckeye. Where the bus driver, if you've been on Buckeye Road, literally hit a ninety degree corner. Like passed the entire side of the bus, took the tire off the rim and landed, kept driving. Until got up off, with the road right across from San, I should, oh, I live there.
Plas?
Plas, turned around on Plas, almost the fire department, went past the, it was like a new driver, went past the spot. Backed up in a car park, backed right up and over the hood. So literally two accidents and this would have recorded and maybe prevent that backing up on there. Cause we've had several backing up into vehicle accidents. So I do think that some of the costs.
Yeah, we're going to be, my other question is the accrued benefit there, you know?
Is that's going to, yes, there's some risk, you know, that's an unknown.
Cause I mean, I know we're, every time you get something new, you're speculating a bit.
There's several brands out there now. I've actually even seen buses advertised with them.
Okay, well, that's, that's encouraging.
Having toured one myself, I think several of us saw our demo unit just having this partnership with a local company, it's a tremendous safety enhancement. Just in conjunction with a local company.
Well, just a safety aspect. Put yourself after driving a car with a backup camera and then get into a vehicle that doesn't have one, oh my goodness.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Be able to see, as I saw three hundred sixty view of the entire bus. That's a point to be made is it's an incredible safety enhancement to the fleet, so I'm glad to see the company. Other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the bus systems? None opposed? Motion carries. On to the pre-approval of overnight trips for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion to pre-approve the activity and athletic overnight trips for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four school year as presented?
Second.
Discussion on this. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the collaboration with the city for the TAP grant application. Do I have a motion to approve the district to collaborate with the city of Hillsborough on the twenty-two, twenty-three TAP grant with regards to the crosswalk and pedestrian bicycle walk?
Sub moved. Second.
Any discussion or background information?
So the city approached me at our government leaders meeting on Tuesday and asked if we'd be interested in submitting a grant. A TAP grant included their project handbook there through the east-west gateway to put in a pedestrian bicycle walkway along Leon Hall that would run all the way from Business Twenty-One all the way to the parking lot of the high school. Uh, in doing that, went out there with a tape measure, in my mind, and I explained this to city administrator Wallace, that in kind of looking at it, ideally, if you go over the Leon Hall, I guess that road's twelve feet wide. One lane is twelve feet wide. Going over another twelve feet, but like, then ten feet would be the sidewalk. That puts us literally, there's, I think I put a picture in there, lines up with the current crosswalk, which may help us out there. We would not be putting in a roadway at this point, but you'd have the sidewalk set up so that you could put the roadway for the turn lane. And it would actually then, looking at it, we may not have to cut all those, the trees out potentially. But it needs to be engineered and work with the city and Jason and on that. So this is merely asking at this point to commit on there, actually, I thought it was the city, but and basically splitting the five thousand dollar fee for engineering for the application. Then there's an application fee of around three thousand dollars that's refundable and we do not get the grant. So four thousand bucks to submit everything, it's due July twenty-second, so there's kind of a turn and burn on that. It's an eighty-twenty grant, meaning they pay eighty, we pay twenty. He estimated at six to seven hundred thousand. So the estimated amount that we would each pay is around seventy-five thousand is what, this is coming from the city administrator, like what he anticipates. So that's what I'm presenting, this is not for the turn lane, this is for the sidewalk, but we would kind of phase one to, now we have the place where the road's going to go and then plan from there as well. And I would, from our standpoint, I would visit what Mr. Von Hark, I assume was, would be doing is we're going to be putting a turn lane there, so we don't want to be blocking that off and planning that out, so just that's it.
And this has been talked about, I think maybe my first year on the board.
What was, do you remember what that breakdown was back then? I, I did, obviously it wasn't on board, I think I was sitting out there when it came up for a vote. Sixty-four, he's sticking to my head, but I don't know if that's, if that's right or not.
To me, this is a no brainer, it must be done.
The city council doesn't know about it, by the way. Is, I'll say, somebody approached me, I'm like, well, I gotta talk to the board about it, I have a board meeting on Thursday, he's like, oh, I haven't talked to my city council.
This is not the submission of that.
Right.
This is step one, Hillsborough School District is doing step one, the city council and the Hillsborough, they have to go through theirs. This is coming from that, our meeting on Tuesday.
He just approached us last week about that. And that's why we're kind of pushing it through, we know about it. I'll have to go through my board, you know, July third, get their approval, but you know, the time is kind of sharp.
Yes. Yeah, be the next board meeting.
So, and my board does not know about it yet, or anybody knows about it, we just got, you know, it wouldn't take long to know about it.
So Mr. Russell, there's five thousand people watching right now.
Yes.
I really don't care about safety gigs and we're going to get down there and have it. But I'm just happy to be in my waters, we'll have a great conversation.
Other discussion, points of clarification?
So you have the crosswalk that's going to be right by the L.A.?
No, it'd be up here at the stoplight.
Yeah, right by the stoplight.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here.
I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, it kind of, that kind of does.
I mean, if you can, all the way up on the, almost up to the parking lot of the tiny place.
Yes.
That's what it looks like there, so.
Yeah, bicycles included, so people, they'll, they'll know the rules of the road, not, not to just skim right from a car, right?
The red.
We make things less safe by.
It's, I anticipate it's going to be way more of a walking and our cross-country team.
But if bicycles are allowed, I just want to make sure they know, you know, even thirty-five miles an hour is still not enough time if you're just zapping out there. You're going to need a stop sign or something, you know?
All right, other discussion? All those in favor of approving this collaboration? None opposed? Motion carries. On to the approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four teacher MOU. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four teacher MOU between the Hillsborough R-three school district and the HNEA and HCTA as presented?
Sub moved.
Second, sorry. Thank you. All right, discussion this evening?
Yes. With that being said, I personally am not in favor of this, simply because it gives up way too much. Two thousand dollars of that third step of career ladder. And you guys know, I'm a product of career ladder, that there's about eighty-eight thousand, eighty-eight thousand dollars that I would not have made if it wasn't for career ladder. And I know it does make our district more competitive with incoming staff as well. And I think we're just giving up, you know, way too much. And blame me, don't blame Dr. I. I've been the one that have been, has been pushing career ladder since last September. And you know, I'm not happy with the compromise personally, just letting you know. That's my perspective.
Bear with me for a minute, I saw, talk some things. My kids have all gone through this district. I have attended board meetings for a long time before I was on the board. And I can remember sitting out there and seeing teachers and staff run out of the room crying because of things that board members said here, blaming them for our kids failing and accusing them of stealing and all kinds of stuff. I've been on the board eight years, Andy's been on the board eight years, eight or nine, nine. And I really think that about eight years ago, there was a huge evolution in the relationship between the board and the district. You have a board that either has an alum, parents or spouse of staff members and parents of students. And there is no benefit to us to not do the best we can for our teachers. You know, I own a business and I manufacture a product and yes, my building's important, my equipment's important, my inventory. I can't do anything without my people. And I have to do whatever I can to keep them, to be competitive, but I still have to make profit. On, on the school board, there's not a meeting that goes by that we don't have a discussion, an executive about what more can we do? What can we do for them? We know that teaching's gotten harder and all that. But I would say the last three years have been offensive on how the mean conferred is going. And for three years, there's been more money left on the table than were given because they didn't accept what I, what we gave. There, we've been hand, our top hands have been tied with giving a higher rate for incoming teachers to be more competitive. I feel that teachers near retirement have been penalized by some of the arrangements. And I don't, I don't get it, but everyone here wants the best for these teachers. My kids benefited from awesome teachers and I'm thankful and that's why I'm here. But the last three years, and I consider that the teachers look at reorganizing or something to, when, three years ago, when the communication went from our superintendent to the staff, to the leaders of the teachers, to the staff. The miscommunication, the misunderstanding, the negative Facebook, the emails, calling us liars, that we're holding money back. It's ridiculous when I know how much everyone on this board cares about our staff. When I know how much everyone on this board cares about our staff and our kids. And uh, so I'm, I'm struggling with this whole agreement too, but that's what I'm gonna say.
Appreciate that. Other points of discussion?
Well, I was just gonna piggyback a little bit, is that um I do not, I'm not a Hills, you know, I've lived here, my kids graduated from here. I never applied for a job here, um simply because I didn't want my kids to be teachers' kids. Um, so I do not know what the history of Hillsborough is and quote negotiations, but it's not negotiations, it's meet and confer. And um, you know, it's definitely, you've heard me say this before, definitely a strong us versus them. And I agree with Rob, that been here too long, that um, yeah, we're hiding stuff. And gosh darn, if you can't trust us, then you, you can't trust anybody pretty much, because you can't.
So, to both of your points, from my perspective, having been through this year's meet and confer and last year's, um, I thought that this year showed um a spark of growth, to the point that you made about um uh just the meet and confer process, uh in that what we have presented here tonight, I am in favor of, um simply because this board has discussed career ladder, we've wanted to go that direction. But we know that we have, we talked about it just a few minutes ago, the SRS spend down that's coming, that's gonna pull some money from reserves. Uh, we're gonna return to these pre-COVID-88 calculations in the next year. Uh, we've got some debt, debt service expiring, and so that all, that affects the bottom line, affects the budget. We need to stay competitive with starting teacher pay, and that's that on-the-base calculation that, that is part of that MOU. And so that's factored in here. Um, and so the, the presentation tonight of the first two levels of career ladder, in my opinion, is a great starting point for us. It allows us to explore responsibly and financially responsible ways to move in the direction of career ladder. The, the, having um, having little to no experience with career, well, not, not, not little, no experience with career ladder professionally, and learning about the um, the DESI's program there, the backend assessment component uh is very important to me. Um, but professionally, you don't enter into an action plan without an assessment piece on the end of that. And so the timeframe of what we've set forth in this MOU gives us, in my opinion, the opportunity to truly and clearly assess career ladder without jumping in too irresponsibly, also keeping, uh, keeping focus on the financial um piece of, of this and making sure that we can pay competitively and allow that flexibility into the career ladder uh options in the years to come. I'd love for us to be sitting here a year from now, exploring that, that third ladder, but this is where, in my opinion, where we're at financially, uh and finan, financial responsibility today. And so that's uh, so that's, that's, that's my take uh on, on being in favor of the MOU as presented tonight.
I have a few words. Okay.
Yes, Ms. Oshie, go right ahead.
Thank you, thank you. You know, um, you know, I know that we have a lot, or a handful of educators in our district who work part-time jobs to supplement their incomes. And for me, I struggle with not offering or factoring in that third level of career ladder in this MOU, because I feel like that choice of how our educators supplement their income should be an option. And this very well could be an option for them, to give them time back with their families, with their friends, and not have to work a spent job to supplement their incomes. So I do struggle with just not having that as an offering or an option. Those individuals who don't want to participate at that third level, that's their choice, they're not required. But I do feel like, you know, it's not our, we're making that choice for, for them by not offering that option. So I, I've been struggling with that piece.
The, the one question here, though, would be, is it a choice we can offer in the sense of, we still are on the hook for some money here. So can we afford to offer all, I mean, that was the original idea, but there would have to be less money elsewhere, I think. We'd have to, things would have to materially change.
And I think, you know, I think like you said, the evaluation process, we don't know how many are going to wanna opt into this program. And we might have 10, and we might have 70. There's a big difference there on what we would be responsible for as a district. I mean, I, I think, you know, I, I understand with the uncertainty of the financial situation right now, and where we're sitting, what's gonna be happening in the next couple of years, I, I understand that caution. And I, to me, that makes, that does make sense. I mean, you know, this is coming for someone who, as a spouse, who would probably honestly take part in that program. But I, I just, you know, I, I think it makes sense to gauge that interest first. You know, be a little cautious going into it instead of jumping in both feet into the gym without knowing. You know, some of the stuff I write, I think Jeff City, I remember writing, they had like a 68% participation rate last year in career ladder. So, which is great, but if we have that, can we, you know, where does that put us on the chart? From the effect you can give him that wouldn't be good.
John kind of had those numbers when we met with the team, um, you know, and what did you project? Because he was kind of looking at that when we offered the 200, 200, 200 to the salary with full career ladder.
And I, I guess my point is, we, we would have to go back to 200, 200, 200 if, if you're wanting to have.
Because I look.
Because I don't think we can afford the current offering.
Well, and I look at that, that's a hundred dollars difference over the course of three years and sacrificing 6,000 over the course of three years.
And my other question about, I mean, this is just for one year, right? We, we really couldn't make it multiple years.
Well, we could, but that's not gonna work.
Well.
Without a firm commitment to what, you know, to what we're looking at is.
Well, but, but, but let's pose that discussion.
You close the discussion and then I.
So, the, the, the piece then that I struggled with through this process is, um, again, that's what's, what's best for the kids. Uh, and the scalability component is what I kept coming back to. And that then goes to the three, the three ladders, or the three components of career ladder. The important part of this to me is that we have quality career ladder curricular connections. We're going from a position where we're essentially at this crossroads of not having explored career ladder and going to. Uh, the, this is, uh, that top tier is a 100-hour commitment on our educators. We need to ensure, in my opinion, that we have quality career ladder components. And I think, I think that moving in that direction slowly, the feedback that I have uh received is, is concerns about, about rushing and about moving too fast. Um, it's been less about the financial component of, of, of the net pay on the end, but moving too quickly, because we do have a, a local component to this that will then control what will be um committed by way of application on our educators. And so I think it's important that we consider the quality piece of that, which then goes back to the assessment component of what happens at 12 months or 24 months, and looking back on how well um career ladder is working and how engaged we are uh from Dr. Seuss nights or things, like things like that, the primary, all the way up to different things that are eligible, you know, throughout the district.
So, so for information, or, or I, and also to clarify, though, if we do what we're currently proposing, there is a risk that the Level 3 won't be available if we decide it's going well, and we're like, oh yeah, we wanna do all three levels and, you know, that's going to be off the table pretty much, right?
No, I will speak to that. Is, I didn't include in my legislative, um, or I did, is the state of Missouri, that was in, my superintendent report, if someone could, you know, the superintendent report, it actually has the allocation. A couple of different things, so I'm not bouncing around. To add the financial question that was asked earlier. What is the impact of adding the 2,000, the additional 2,000 dollars? To just add it, in a worst case scenario, let's say we have 200, we have 200 teachers. All 200 did it, that's $400,000 spent. DESI matches the 60%, but basically works out to half. So the district would be on, that's 400,000, half is 200,000. In a worst-case scenario, it'd be 200,000 dollars. That means every teacher in the district did it. And the 60%, which is kind of what I've used at that, 120,000 dollars. So, a couple of different things is, um, Dr. Isaacson's suggestion. One, I would implore the board to approve the MOU as presented, that's step one. It both honors the compromise that was made, and it doesn't put the board in a situation of, to what Ms. Oshie was saying, yes, there are people that are working part-time workers, and would benefit from that. But then the board is saying, but your situation is more important than your situation, that would just get, it's picking and choosing, that's the hard thing through this. In each lever, there is picking and choosing, because even going through, that's a difficulty in trying to, for the board and for our organizational teams, every one of our employees, all 3, 400, has different needs. Some, healthcare is the number one issue, because we have a situation. Salary is the number one issue, single parent, sometimes salary's not the issue. It's, I need more help in my class, I need support, like, this is, I do this for the enjoyment of my job. The money is just, everyone has got a different situation. And we're trying to figure out what the best for our employee, to have the best morale, to have the best teachers, et cetera. Is ultimately, we have a process, the process has arrived here. That doesn't eliminate to like what, and I've thought about this is throughout um since the MOU, is as you'll see, the next, the career ladder going to DESI for approval is all three levels. Which DESI has already accepted it, they're just waiting, they've already accepted us doing three levels. So my point to that is, from a state level, there is, the district can move to a level, stage three at each time. Is approving the MOU in the first two stages does allow to what Mr. Lynn Horace and others said, gauges the interest. Is then, conversation throughout is, um, I think about, this is Josh, they started theirs in August. Is then people would have now, like, I'm doing stage one or two, would you've done stage three? Is the board can come back outside, uh, it's within their rights out of the MOU to be like, we're gonna, we wanna offer stage three, almost like a stipend-type thing, but it would be, in my mind, is offering that. It, it could be a mid-year, it could be, uh, COVID could be in July. That's the board, like, we're gonna go over and above. And to me, if there were, if the teachers, nothing's being taken away. Potentially, what is being taken away is, um, and, and it's not, this, when I've thought about this, I wanna be very clear on camera, this isn't, because this always, well, they had more money, they could've done it anyhow. That's not what this is. This is, we have in every school district, I'm gonna say every, that's what broads them. Many school districts in the state of Missouri have a large savings account with asset funds coming out of COVID. But us, and like our neighbors to the south, our revenue is dwindling. So it's like, kind of analogy, is if we went to Mr. Stevenson and his employer said, I'm gonna give you $30,000 right now, but each year, I'm gonna cut your salary by eight grand. A lot of people would be like, give me the 30 grand right now, but, and then you start deciding, we can, we can spend the savings down, but as you start nearing the, wow, my salary got cut and that savings account's down to like five grand, there comes that threshold where you have issues. For us, in planning this out, the board's discussion or, or thought process, and why I say I would recommend approving the 500, because that, one of our C-SIP goals is to be in the top 40%. If we drop down to 200, step in 200, as was discussed, we still gotta make that up, long-term. It's still in the race against other schools to maintain that. So the district's gonna have to make up that time in the mile at some point. But it also doesn't take away from the people that need that. We engage um stage one and two now for a minute, for the reasons that Mr. Lynn Horace talked about, we get started. But it doesn't, the MOU isn't, the board, in my mind, could say, you know what, we wanna engage step three. The money that is being, from the board's standpoint, I, I think I, I'll use an analogy, it's, we know that we have to pass a tax increase. There's a lot of variables, the state may change the foundation formula, because declining enrollment in the state of Missouri, the state's paying out less in education to all the schools, so they may readjust that to get that back up. They may, but it's not a sure thing. Is our, Ms. Genj has worked very hard to come up with, if we figure in $275,000, thereabouts of, the change with staff leaving and their salaries. If that doesn't occur, it spends down our reserves a little bit more. So what we're doing is we planned it out, um, in that thing that like Mr. Lynn, or, excuse me, Mr. Schuster addressed, like, this is our reserves here, our reserves here, our reserves here. Is really the board, the decision in my mind before the, isn't, should we do 500? Because I don't, it's not on our teachers' backs to bear the financial woes of the state. They have families to feed, uh, all of our employees, not just teachers, all of our employees. It's us making a calculated, all right, what we're playing with is 2025 and 2026's money in the bank balance. Do we, is it worth it now? Because when we had talked about it way back when on three, is we had said, step plus 200 is 200 times the teachers, but really it's 400 employees, is 80 grand, right, in my head? Oh, it's a little more than that. See if, help me out, 200 times 400 people.
You know any my company or anything?
No, you've got it right.
Is that what it says?
You got it right.
80,000?
Yeah.
So that's $80,000. When I said, all right, in the worst case, doing adding the two years, or the, the Level 3 and the 2,000, is 200,000, more likely it's gonna be 60%, 120,000. So then you're playing with uh, all right, the board may only, truly only be able to give a step in that year three. We're already kind of planned it out, step 500, step, step in 200. Is before the board, that's really maintaining step in 500, and we're gonna take the calculated gamble. Is does that 2,000 now additional? And this could be even, it could be in September. Is, because people that have wanted to, can start getting their applications in now, is there is, as I kind of was thinking about this and looking at, there is the, I wanna change, amend my plan. Is I'm engaged, I'm in my plan, I wanna do the 25 additional hours and go for the, but we'll have a very firm, finite number, this is a mon, somebody's not gonna be like, if I can't do the five, I'm not doing the three. Is people that are gonna do it, I think would do it. So to that, and in summary, I think if the board is dead-set on doing, or would like to do Level 3, I believe that they could still do that outside the MOU, they're approving the MOU, that's what we're bound to. But if the board is seeing like, hey, the interest is here, we feel like it's in the best interest of the staff, we know what our reserves are, is, this isn't extra money. Like, the money's the money, it's just, we're choosing to spend that now, and we're gonna work hard, because we have passed a tax lobby or lobby for the additional funds from, is the number I think. what is the number, I think, sixty-nine million for career ladder. So going back to that question, each year is a reshuffle. Um, just, it's gonna ultimately be the number of school districts putting it in, just because we asked for allocation for all three levels this year doesn't even guarantee that we get it next year. So that, it's not like, hey, you're in, you're locked in forever, is, um, it's a game of math of how many schools want to do it. That's the max, um, that can get it. And they were well under that. I mean, they were, they got the, when I was at the conference, they were at like thirty-nine or forty million, so in year one.
The idea that the funds or the state level are gonna run out if we, you know, if we don't use it this year is not necessarily.
I don't think, we won't be blocked out of level three because that. We could do level three this year and every school in the state of Missouri and every teacher wants to do it. That would impact, then we could be blocked out.
Yeah, I, I guess what was kind of at the very beginning was, the funds might be here for this year and then, you know, they might dry up and, you know.
I, I could foresee, I mean, here it is, this is state legislature, they had all these, one point four percent of the education bills got passed. But, um.
It's not a function of money.
They are, I don't foresee the career ladder going away any, um, time soon. I think it's, uh, there's some political value that politicians are getting from it.
It's, it's hard to know, there's so many macroeconomic variables that are just.
They will add this and because there's getting, it's an incentive for those people that are doing it. I don't, I'd be pushing against it if I truly felt that it was gonna be going away. Because if it goes away, it's gonna be a monster headache.
Can we, yeah.
Legitimately, I don't. So I think that the board, in some way, can approve this MOU. And if, the, and they could do the third part, but the, the, the decision before the board then is really, all right, mathematically, we're really looking at that two hundred dollars two years from now. Is that.
So, and I mean, we could do a thing of, you know, hey, if you're interested, tell us and then we, how many people are interested and say, okay, this is the financial impact we're gonna be looking at.
We can add that as an, if they're signing up for tier two, would you, and they're eligible for tier three, would you have been interested in tier three?
Yeah.
On the application for stage one.
That would be nice to just know where it might go.
Again, the piece about that scalability is this is a time commitment on our teachers to do things that are not in the classroom that they're already getting paid for. So engaging them at, and at, at levels of hours that are additional commitment. Yes, absolutely, that, that would then, no matter, it'd be more, give the, the effort to scale up, wouldn't it?
I just, I just want to clarify on where I was coming from. The last meeting, you and Lozen Kelly and President John, uh, did a great job explaining how we got here, why we needed to be here. My issue is with the process. The, um, collaboration issues, respect issues, spite. I mean, when our superintendents get barraged with emails and calls from staff because they don't understand what they were told and he lets people know that he's gonna have a meeting to explain it and put a survey out on Monday and on Friday, they shoot them one out first. I, just the whole process, um, the last few years is steadily, each year has gotten a little worse. That's my.
There's been some unnecessary acrimony.
Yeah, that's, that's my.
That's true.
And I, and I think to add, you know, my thought, my brain goes to, where does that come from? Because in my time on this board, you know, we've always, I mean, we did the fix to get everyone, you know, correct, I mean, we've done a lot, both from, both from just a pay scale standpoint, but also an insurance standpoint that kind of leads into that. So, you know, we've done a ton to try and put out us as, you know, to attract staff, but also for our current staff to keep them here. And I, and I just question, right, you know, to myself, where does that lack of trust start at? Because I know what it was like when I started, when I got up. And I know where it's, I, I, I know where I feel that it's at now and then, you know, ma- maybe I'm putting too much on the job we've done. I don't know, but, but that's, that's something I kind of thought about, you know, going through this too.
And I keep hearing the slower rollout, slower rollout. I go back to, career ladder's about new. It's, I mean, Hillsborough hasn't been involved in it, but from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and ten, it was there, it was active. The kinks have been worked out and what has been re-implemented is the best of those first nineteen years. And there is a lot more emphasis on, um, student engagement, parent engagement, community engagement than there was in the first, like, five years of it, nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-six. But, um, you know, I just think Hillsborough is afraid of all the career.
Not to be hopping back and forth between topics, but one other thing I will note publicly that to everyone is the acrimony that, it, it's not wrong to challenge when a meeting confer and have, you know, hey, we don't like this and have a conversation or even a debate, but when it devolves down to trust issues and just finger pointing, we end up, like, the superintendent and the administration is involved in this process and it eats their time. That's a monetary hit to the district because their time is paid for. And so, in some ways, it's weird because it's eating away some of their own resources that they say they, they want. And I don't know if they really realize tying up staff is a monetary hit to the district. Might not be enormous, but it is something.
So I would like to speak to the point I made earlier about this year being a spark of positive change, in my impression. The commitment to this process is what is presented here. I think that, that sends a signal. Um, I think that, 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 that we are committed to the process of, of meet and confer. I realize that the ultimate decision-making body is sitting here in front of us, but trust and transparency is, is a, is very important to what we're, what we're doing with this, again, going back to the scalability piece, just putting that back on our educators to build the right career ladder plan for the Hillsborough School District, presumably being directed and coached by Mrs. Silverbrand at the local committee level, I'm making a mistake. Right? Um, but that then gives the educators the right, um, set of tools to create what's best for our students. That's then this part positivity that I see coming from this year's meeting confer that was different than in years prior that I've been involved.
For ready to vote, I suggest we do a roll call vote because I want to take responsibility for that vote.
Okay. Um, we have a suggestion for a roll call vote on the floor that will need a second.
Second.
Second. And just a quick show of hands to approve moving from our traditional vote to a roll call vote. All those in favor, vote a roll call vote this evening. It's all six of us. Any further discussion? Mrs. Knott, we'll move to roll call ver- vote to approve as presented.
Okay, Mrs. Petrie.
No.
Okay, Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie.
No.
Okay, Mr. Schusler.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lynn Horse.
Yes. All right, that vote is four to two, motion carries. Our next item of business tonight is the approval of the career ladder program implementation for twenty-three, twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve the career ladder program implementation and handbook for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four?
Seven seconds.
Any discussion? All right, here you go. All those in favor of approving the career ladder program implementation and handbook? None opposed, motion carries. Going to the approval of our custodial supervisor, which is titled Working Lead. I'm sorry, what is, that's a.
It's kind of an explanation.
Okay, yeah, a lead, a lead position as a custodial supervisor for evenings, for example. Do I have a motion to approve a custodial supervisor, working lead position as presented?
Seven seconds.
Thanks.
We don't have discussion?
No. So I think I'll explain that. Is, this is, Mr. Bass and I have talked about this for a number of years. And it was in our organizational chart, kind of filling out to, this position isn't, it's gonna be a new title. I don't see this as a new FTE. Is ideally, we're gonna find a candidate, it's just giving, John Isaacson works as a custodian at night, is, and I do a really good job, is I can be a champion for training people, being an advocate for communication between Mr. Bass, um, and having, uh, somebody in a supervisory role. And is compensated, that, I haven't put out the compensation for that. I anticipate two to three, uh, dollars more an hour on top of their normal salary, so anywhere from four to six thousand dollars, uh, for the interview. So we will post that position and just to have someone, um, onsite, working. Team leader is basically what it is. And it provides upward movement, mobility for one of our custodians to take on more of a leadership role. And, um, the focus will be more on training so that, hey, this is the right way, expectations for cleaning. They will play a role, a part in the corrective action and performance, um, evaluations. But to that end, it's going to be myself, Dr. LaRue, Ray, and that individual, but the speaking parts will be left, and some coaching and growing within that part of that process, not, we want to focus on positivity on that role, but also expectations, it's like, grow that champion. But also assist with, um, having someone here that, if they have an insurance issue. Dr. Isaacson's not there, but they can, they have someone they can go to and be like, hey, Dr. I, will you? Or go through the channel to help out that, uh, to free up Ray from.
Kind of like adding a sergeant level in between the captains.
Yes, that's exactly, is somebody to help out with running the platoon all the way down. And at night, they're the only group that doesn't, literally, everyone's, they do a great job, but it's just.
So would they be in one building or would they kind of?
Move around. And so Ray would just, hey, I'm, and there's, so there's gonna be so many different benefits, cross-training. I'm gonna, I'm working with somebody because they're not really up to par. This is the level, uh, that we're gonna have, so filling in on someone. Because someone, someone's absent, we can be like, go to that building, even if the absence isn't there, because I'm gonna go here. And just, they will be in all the buildings and, uh, do that, so that's the.
I think it's a great strategic workforce investment. We talked some about the grow your own and that kind of a thing, so this is very much. Other discussion? All those in favor of, of approving the custodial supervisor position, show of hands. None opposed, motion carries. And our final new business item tonight is approval of a special session to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four salary schedules and salary and benefits handbook. Do I have a motion to approve of a special session for?
Motion.
June twenty.
Second. Wait, when?
June twenty-eighth at six thirty, six thirty P M.
I will share, this is all the cloud, because I just happened to.
All those in favor of approving special session next week? None opposed, motion carries.
And that will be open session at six thirty, so Ms. Chiller, if you want to, and we'll record it, but it may not be a live video, but it'll be recorded as well.
All right, that brings us to the end of new business tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting at eight twenty-six P M? Again, we'll each do it and then just. All those in favor of adjourned tonight?
Got it.
Motion carry.